Welcome to City Hall and good morning to all of you and to Wichita. We'll call the meeting to order. With us virtually is Pastor Pamela Hughes-Mason with St. Paul AME Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you all to join us today. Pastor Pam, it's a pleasure to have you virtually.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. God, we thank you for this, a brand-new day. We thank you, God, for the history, the legacy, that has been set before us as we build upon it. We ask you now, dear God, that you would provide safety this day as our city deals with inclement weather, oh God. We ask you, God, to protect those that are without shelter, protect those who have shelter, protect those to provide services, oh God. But now, dear God, we thank you for our mayor, for our city council persons, for those who work in administration, and for every city employee, oh God, and for every resident of Wichita. God help us this year to glean toward the things you would have us to do as a city. Help us to listen, to hear, to work in collegiality, oh God, to move in the way that we build our city in ways we've never even imagined. We thank you for the accomplishments. We thank you, God, for the strongholds and the struggles, oh God, because they have made us stronger, God. So now, dear God, for those who are just assuming office as of yesterday, God, we ask you now, God, to give them discernment, understanding, compassion, and patience, oh God. This we declare in Jesus' name. We pray. Amen.
We have approval of the meeting minutes for January 2, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections? I see none. I move that we approve those minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any other discussion? Clerk will open the roll and members will cast their votes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We pass that motion with two abstaining for approving. All right. We have a proclamation now. We ask that Youth Horizons please come forward. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the number of youth living with a single parent has increased from 1.5 million in 1950 to 10.6 million in 2022." That's according to census data. "Representing nearly 25% of American households and a growing number of youth emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic needing nurturing adult guidance. And whereas evidence shows that youth who are mentored experience improved mental health, fewer disciplinary issues, strengthened community connections, healthier peer relationships, and other positive outcomes. And mentored youth are 55% more likely to enroll in post-secondary education, 78% more likely to volunteer in the community, 81% more likely to participate in extracurricular activities, and 90% more likely to become a mentor themselves. Whereas, youth who are mentored are more likely to develop labor force skills, build social capital, support local retention efforts, and stay connected to their faith while developing a purpose-driven life. And whereas, Youth Horizons is a homegrown Christian nonprofit with more than three decades of providing youth mentoring, residential foster care services, and advocacy efforts for youth needing family services. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of January as National Mentoring Month."
Mayor Wu and council persons, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Mayor Wu alluded to, Youth Horizons has been around for about 30 years doing the work of advocating and championing for the needs of at-risk youth. And so, we're excited about this month as it is National Mentoring Awareness Month, and we're out there doing what we can to make the lives of young people better. So, thank you again for the opportunity and for the proclamation.
Madam Clerk, we will go back on the agenda and regarding the... After the approval of the minutes, we actually have the selection of the Vice Mayor, which we will take a vote on first. Everyone has a ballot. Councilmember Mike Hoheisel, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I am the one who messed with this agenda here. This is my December 9th, so I'm really trying to stay in office here, but I apologize for that. No, it's been an honor to serve as Vice Mayor over the last year. I hope I have served honorably and made my family and friends in the city proud. And with that, I would like to make a motion for Maggie Ballard to be the next Vice Mayor of Wichita. I know she has all the heart in the world and she'll do the job great. So, that is my motion, Madam Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you get a ballot? And members, cast your ballot. Motion passes seven to zero. Madam Wu, I believe that now we invite Judge Jones to the front along with now-new Vice Mayor Maggie Ballard to the front of the stage.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Maggie Ballard.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
and faithfully discharge the duties.
and faithfully discharge the duties.
of the Vice Mayor for the City of Wichita, Kansas.
and the...
of the Vice Mayor.
of the Vice Mayor.
for the city.
for the city Wichita.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to my colleagues for their confidence in electing me as Vice Mayor for 2024. This is going to be a big year, and I'm ready to hit the ground running. I'm looking forward to this opportunity to serve Wichita in this capacity and being part of the leadership team with Mayor Wu. Again, thank you for your support and confidence, and I will work hard and looking forward to the year ahead. Thank you.
We have Councilmember Tuttle on the board.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Hoheisel for serving as Vice Mayor last year. I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate you stepping in to fulfill duties when the mayor wasn't available. You ran a few meetings and you did a really great job, so thank you for that. I also want to congratulate Vice Mayor Ballard. Thank you for being willing to serve and to take on the extra responsibility of being Vice Mayor. I have confidence that she'll do a great job, so I look forward to serving with you again during this next year as your terms Vice Mayor.
Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Public Agenda, Andrew Crane, Transit Concerns.
Ms. Mayor, I believe we have a presentation for the outgoing Vice Mayor. I apologize if you'd like to present him with an award for his time service.
I'm sorry. Bear with me on my first meeting as we have a new leadership, including a new Vice Mayor. May I please ask former Vice Mayor Mike Hoheisel to join me at the front of the stage for a special presentation?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the rest of council. Like I said, this had been an honor of a lifetime. I hope I served well. I hope I served honorably. I'm a genuine person, and this will be treasured, but not as much as the memories over the last year, and especially the accomplishments we have gotten done, and the accomplishments we will get done over the next two years. So, thank you, everybody, for their trust in me, and let's keep moving Wichita along. Thank you, everybody.
Now we begin the public agenda. Madam Clerk, one more time, who do we have at the front?
We have Andrew Crane, Transit Concerns.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to let you guys know and challenge you guys today to really step onto the Wichita buses. Drop your keys, for one, and come ride the bus with me. I am an active rider of the Wichita Transit, been for several years, and I am a well-known blind individual that's representing the blind community and the disabled community. And I'm ready to see Wichita Transit and get some things done here. And I challenge you today to ride, to drop your keys and ride the bus for to and from work, or to the grocery store, or anything. And also, we need some more covered shelters for bus stops and making it ADA accessible to the blind community and to the disabled community. And I challenge you guys today to get some work done and to really look at transit, because Mike Tan over here has been doing some great work, and it's about time we get some money to the Wichita Transit today. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mark Handteats, welcome new mayor and ask about justice for CJ.
Before our next item, we'll ask Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say a representative with Mark Hawn reached out to me and said he wouldn't make it today.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Bill Anderson, Ceasefire in Gaza.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. Congratulations to the new members. I have to read this because I'm not good at extemporaneous speaking. Unfortunately, hello, I'm Bill Anderson, and I live on Jefferson Street in Maggie Ballard's district. I love Maggie. Thank you, Maggie. Today, I'm here to beg, implore, whatever it takes, for you to join with other American cities, including Providence, Rhode Island... You should have a copy of this. Okay. Including Providence, Rhode Island, Portland, Maine, Albany, New York, Atlanta, Georgia, Iowa City, Iowa, Detroit, Chicago, Oakland, California, among others, in calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. A few days ago, the UN humanitarian chief said Gaza had become uninhabitable. Two million people, uninhabitable. The enormous suffering and devastation of life must cease. Especially as Americans, we have a moral obligation to speak out, basically because it is our government which is supporting Israel financially, militarily, and diplomatically. I will now read the statement issued by the Carter Center in Georgia, Jimmy Carter Center. It was released on October 31st, calling for a ceasefire, which I urge you to support. The only changes made to it reflect the increase in casualty numbers since then. The original numbers in the original statement were much lower than they are in this one. So, here it goes. Four paragraphs, and you all have it, so you can read along with me if you want. At the end of October, Israeli forces moved into Gaza and intensified their devastating attacks. Israel, like all nations, has a right to defend itself. It also has the obligation of proportionality under international law. Violence will only beget more violence. We urge all parties to agree to a ceasefire. We ask for the opening of humanitarian corridors in Gaza and the reinstatement of essential services to the area. We urge the immediate, safe return of all hostages, and we call on both sides to abide by international law. Hamas is responsible for the horrific October 7 massacre of more than 1,400 innocent people in Israel and the taking of more than 200 hostages. And the innocent people of Gaza are now unfairly suffering from the ongoing conflict and the acute humanitarian crisis that has unfolded. Israel's devastating strikes have killed more than 22,000 people, overwhelmingly civilians, including over 8,000 children. Tens of thousands more have lost their homes, and the entire population urgently needs medicine, food, water, and electricity. We call on Israel to enable essential services to reach Gaza so lives can be saved, so lives can be saved. We also decry the rise of anti-Semitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Palestinian sentiments around the world, which is spreading fear through hateful speech and acts. Dehumanization is a gateway to violence and must be condemned wherever it arises. Final paragraph. Collective punishment is contrary to international law. So is the murder of civilians. The violence must stop now. There is no military solution to this crisis, only a political one that acknowledges the common humanity of both Israelis and Palestinians, respects the human rights of all, and creates a path for both societies to live side by side in peace. Please do whatever you can officially to support this statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you to our public speakers. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 10.
Is there a motion to approve? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk will open the roll and members will cast their votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts, dated January 8, 2024.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council Josh Lawber, Purchasing Manager with Department Finance, Purchasing Division. As you may know, the Board of Bids and Contracts has administrative function. It serves to review the recommendations by purchasing in the requesting departments. I am here today to present to you the Board of Bids and Contracts recommendations for January 8, 2024. For engineering, we have infrastructure improvements for Skyway West Sixth Edition, water distribution system, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer, and paving. We have a recommendation for Mies Construction Incorporated in the amount of $961,212.15. We have for Belchase Third Edition, tie-in with sanitary sewer of Belchase Third Edition, a water distribution system, infrastructure improvement. For Mies Construction Incorporated in the amount of $211,259.60. We have street paving for Blue Lake Third Edition improvements. For Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas paving in the amount of $557,853. For purchasing, we have the veterinary care services for Wichita Police Department or Animal Care Shelter. Recommendation is for Rose Hill Veterinary and Wellness Center, LLC, DBA Hodges Veterinary Health Center. We have a Good Samaritan case maximum charge of $300, and we have animal control case maximum charge of $800. We have the polymer C9545 for use in our wastewater solids dewatering for Polydine Incorporated in the amount of $1.62 per pound. For those online and attending, this is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita, Kansas. These are open request proposals out on the street right now, and I recommend your approval of the bid boards recommended, and I'll try to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for staff? Is there a motion to approve? I make a motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Clerk will open the roll. Members, cast your votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning, Mayor. City Councilmembers Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. This morning, I have a couple petitions for your consideration. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement districts, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Prado Edition, located in District 4, the project will provide median paving improvements for new development. The Morings Plaza Fifth Edition, located in District 6, the projects will provide water improvements and sanitary and sewer improvements required for our new commercial development. It is recommended that the City Council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? See no questions. I move to approve this agenda item. Any comments from the public before we go there? Comments? Now I move that we can approve. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes seven to zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Design Concept for 143rd Street East from Kellogg to Harry Street.
Good morning, Mayor. Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities, again for the record. The item before you is Design Concept for 143rd Street from Harry to Kellogg. On January 17, 2023, the City Council approved funding for concept design of 143rd Street East improvements from Kellogg to Harry. On June 6, 2023, the City Council approved an agreement with Garver for a design concept. On December 12, 2023, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, as well as District Advisory Board 2 unanimously approved the design con- Board 2 unanimously approved the design concept. 143rd Street East between Kellogg and Harry is currently a two-lane street with ditches on each side and no sidewalks. The design concept for 143rd Street includes a five-lane roadway, a center-turn lane, curb, improved storm sewers, and 10-feet-wide multi-use path along the west side and a six-foot sidewalk on the east side of 143rd Street. The project will also include geometric improvements and new traffic signals at Harry Street. Project will be coordinated with the East Kellogg improvements and construction schedule that is being overseen by KDOT, and construction is planned to begin in 2025. One lane of traffic will be maintained during construction on both 143rd Street and Harry Street. Again, as I mentioned, this project will be coordinated with KDOT's East Kellogg project. Their limits of the project extend south of Kellogg on 143rd Street down to Lakeshore Drive, which is at the bottom of the screen there. The concept before you, or the map before you, shows the improvements that we will be doing. Again, that red line there starts approximately at Lakeshore Drive, south of Kellogg, and extends south through the Kellogg, or through the Harry and 143rd Street intersection. That's a photo of some of the existing conditions. Again, as I mentioned, it's a two-lane roadway with ditches and no sidewalk. And the intersection of Harry Street and 143rd intersection has traffic signals with wood poles and span wire that will be upgraded. Looking at the overall concept of the project, again, starting at the top right of the screen, Lakeshore Drive extending from right to left to Harry Street at the bottom of the concept drawing there. Taking a closer look at the proposed improvements, there will be a 10-foot sidewalk, or 10-foot multi-use path, again, on the west side of 143rd Street, two lanes of traffic each direction with a two-way left turn lane and/or left turn lanes to existing residential streets and/or driveways. The improvements at Harry include a five-lane roadway on each approach to the intersection. The traffic signals will be upgraded to our standard mastarm and poles as well. Since this is a concept only, there are no financial considerations to be considered at this time. We will bring forward a supplemental agreement to complete design at a future date. And it's recommended that the City Council approve the design concept, and I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? I see Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Paul, just one quick, simple question. Why not have a multi-use path on both sides of the street?
We have typically, we've on our arterial streets, we've been putting it on one side of the street with the six-foot sidewalk on the other, occasionally some of the limited space. We do have, again, and that's what's matching to the north of Kellogg, and we do, as you can see, we are towards the bottom of the screen there, we are, there is a drainage area where we are keeping that structure and keeping four lanes across that bridge there, so. But typically, we put the multi-use only on one side with six-foot sidewalk on the other.
Okay.
Good morning. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you. I'm Sherri Hollis. I live at 830 East, 143rd Street East. I have a lot of considerations, concerns regarding this project, so I'm just kind of shotgun barrel through some of them. Some of them I'll go into a little bit more detail. One concern is going to be damage to the trees on the residents that live there. On our particular property is, I feel certain that we're probably going to lose two, possibly three of our trees. That's going to discount the value of our property. Postal delivery and garbage pickup. I know some of the residents are concerned how that's going to be impacted during construction and also post-construction. Are there going to be changes? We'd like to know. Maintaining sidewalks. We established at the last meeting at the planning that the homeowners are responsible for maintaining these new sidewalks that are going to go in. So that's going to include litter, mowing, and if you all approve a green area between the road and the sidewalk, keeping that mowed, as well as snow and ice removal, such as today, whenever the snowplows come through and they build a, they plow a big berm on the sidewalk, then it's going to be up to us to clear it. Those are concerns. My next section is on finances. I would like to know, on behalf of the homeowners, how to submit bids and the procedure for replacing of the underground sprinkler systems that the homeowners have along that path that are going to be destroyed by giving up part of our yards that have those underground sprinklers. I also would like to know if there's going to be increased assessment, taxes assessed on the homes, because you take part of the value of the home, build the sidewalks, and then say it's an improved, you have improved our property, and assess this new taxes. That's happened to me before. I'm kind of familiar with some of that. Another thing that I think should be debated is the insurance deductible for claims that could arise out of the construction going on, on building of this new street. I used to work for insurance. I am familiar with insurance claims. The terms that you're going to be looking for are claims that arise due to earth movement. This would be man-made earth movement. Some of the words that you need to be familiar with are blasting, excavation, and vibrations due to the repaving of adjacent roadways. They're real, and if that should happen, and if you should try and submit a claim, first of all, you may or may not be covered on your homeowner's insurance. If you are, the deductible on that is way different than your typical homeowner's deductible. It's a percentage based on the value of your home, not on the value of your claim. So for example, if you have a $250,000 home, the policies that I wrote typically had a 15% deductible, but even based on a 10% deductible, which is conservative, your deductible would be $25,000 should that kind of a claim arise. That's crazy. Who should be responsible for these types of claims? Who's responsible for the underground systems? My next thing, and I will finish up with this, I have a show-and-tell with you that I brought with me for you. I'd like to introduce you to my mother. This is, she goes by Mama Jo. She's 91 years old. She lives with me and my sister, who is with me today. She has heart conditions, COPD, and she gets around with a pink relator walker. So during construction, and so you can imagine, she's got a lot of doctor's appointments. So during construction, we only have one driveway into ours, which is directly on 143rd. When that is under construction, what are we going to do to get Mom to the doctor? She's going to be pushing her little pink buggy across the yard to wherever you all or the planning committee decides is our temporary driveway. She already is high-risk for fall. That will certainly be increased risk for fall. She also has COPD. She's on oxygen 24/7. With all of the construction going on, I'm sure that's going to increase dust and pollutants around in the area. What do we do? Who should be responsible for the claims that arise? Should she fall? Should she develop pneumonia or bronchitis? What's the city's responsibility? She's just one sample. I'm sure there are other people along 143rd Street that, in addition to this. So I would just ask that. You all give to considerations before you cast your vote. How would you vote if this were your street and your mom?
Any additional public discussion? I see none. We're going to bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Paul, could I get some clarification on a couple of the concerns she had? And I don't know this as well, so these are just genuine questions here. If somebody has a sidewalk on their property, are they accountable for making sure that that sidewalk is plowed or swept?
Per the ordinance, yes, they are.
Okay. Her concerns regarding the sprinkler systems, is that something that we work around? Is that something that we will reimburse somebody for?
Typically, if they have sprinkler systems in the right-of-way, they are to have a use-of-street permit for those to be out there. I don't know what her specific case is, so I would have to work with her on that to see if they have those permits in place.
Okay. And does a sidewalk go on to their specials?
This project, sidewalk, would be constructed with the project, and it is funded by LSD funding, so there wouldn't be any assessment to them.
Okay. And I do know that we work to make sure that people still have access to their roads. So would there be an open driveway from their residence to the single lanes that we will have open?
Yes. Again, I'd have to get her specific information, and then, yes, we would provide access. She had mentioned trash trucks and mail as well, so they would have access. We would keep it one lane each direction so that, provide that access, yes. Regarding her driveway, we'd have to determine how wide it is to see if it could be built half at a time, or if it just needs to be removed and then replaced, and we'd get that done as quickly as we could.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Paul. Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
All right. First of all, thank you to the speaker for being here. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time and coming, especially with the inclement weather today. And we'll make sure that you get Paul and my contact information so that we can continue to have a conversation, and I'll have some comments later after we get through the question phase. I caught eight things, and Councilmember Hoheisel, not Vice Mayor, it's going to be hard for me to catch that for a minute. So, Paul, first was damage to trees. Could you address that for us?
So we are, per the tree policy that was approved in December, again, you know, we're at concept stage now. Once we get into further design, we will know the impact of trees. We would like to retain as many trees as possible. Again, once we get into further design, we will bring that back to the board and knowing what trees will be impacted.
Okay. Fantastic. Right answer. Second, postal delivery and garbage during construction. Can you address that for us?
So, yes. Again, depending on where it's picked up, but we will have one lane each direction for those folks to travel down to pick up along 143rd Street.
Okay. Third item with sidewalk, and Councilmember Hoheisel mentioned it, but it was brought up during our DAB. These sidewalks are going to be larger than the sidewalks that are there now, and so when residents potentially have to replace or repair them, can you explain our policies so that there isn't an undue burden because it's a walking and biking path essentially instead of a sidewalk?
Right. And depending on the situation as well, we have, if they have sidewalk in front of their houses, and this is their back, then we have participated in that cost. We require the property owners to pay six feet of the cost of the six-foot sidewalk, and we would make up the difference. I don't know in this particular location if there's a homeowner association or not, but they have also participated in costs.
Absolutely. Thank you. Caught the sprinkler. Can you, and we talked also about her family being able to have access. What about dust mitigation? What do we do just to ensure the quality of life isn't interfered with people during our process?
You know, we will work with the contractor on that as we go through construction.
Okay. Just the last thing that I caught, I think, was insurance deductible for claims during construction. I've never had that in the five years that I've been here. Do you have any thoughts or ideas about that?
I do not on that specific question.
Maybe something to have a further conversation with the resident?
Yes.
Okay. I think I got it all. You did a great job. Thank you.
Council Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the two sisters that came to speak, especially with the weather today. We know that sometimes Tuesdays, especially with snowy weather, is really inconvenient to come and express your concerns, so I just wanted to say thank you for coming and letting us know what some of your concerns are, and continue to keep in touch with us as the project progresses, should it pass. We really appreciate it. So, thanks.
Any further discussion from the bench? Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I want to first thank Paul for being here today and for your presentation and for answering all of our questions. I also want to thank the Public Works and Engineering staff for coming to our District Advisory Board meeting on December 12th and doing a really great job. I was pleasantly surprised that we had many residents who came to express their concerns. We had a very long and thoughtful question-and-answer process with them. Staff did an outstanding job of answering lots of questions and mitigating lots of fears, so I truly appreciate the staff for being so willing to answer questions. One of the statements that I made during the District Advisory Board meeting that I would like to just reiterate to the two friends who came today is this is approving the design concept. During the District Advisory Board meeting, we talked a lot about this doesn't mean that everything is already set and that we, you know, aren't willing to take more public input or have more dialogue. So I would very much like to get your contact information and make sure that you have conversations with Paul, you have conversations with me. This is just basically the discussion starter to move the project to the next phase. So please rest assured that your voice is not the only one you'll hear today. We'll hear from you as much as you would like. So thank you very much for being here again.
Councilmember Tuttle, this is in your district. Would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. There we go. I probably could have just yelled it loud enough, but it's nice with the mic. I appreciate the opportunity to help progress this project along. I do see the value in it, and I do see the need in it. I think it'll provide more safety, especially for walking and biking along this area. So I move that the Wichita City Council approve the design concept.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please open the roll? Members cast your votes. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding, design concept, and supplemental design agreements, number one and number two, for Mount Vernon from Southeast Boulevard to Oliver Street.
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. The next item before you is funding improvements and design concept for Mount Vernon from Southeast Boulevard to Oliver. On June 6th, 2023, the City Council approved an agreement with Baughman to develop design concepts for improvements to Mount Vernon from Southeast Boulevard to Oliver. On December 6th, 2023, and December 11th, 2023, the design concept was approved unanimously by the District 3 Advisory Board and the Wichita Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, respectively. The Wichita Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board recommended separated or protected bicycle lanes to be constructed. The existing roadway is a four-lane section with underground storm sewer. The proposed concept will rehabilitate and convert Mount Vernon to a three-lane roadway with on-street bike lanes. The three-lane configuration includes one three-lane in each direction with a center-left, two-way left turn lane or raised median where feasible. The existing sidewalks will also be evaluated and repaired as needed with the project. During construction, one lane of traffic in each direction will be maintained, and construction is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2024 and be completed by spring of 2025. This is a map showing the project limits. Southeast Boulevard to the left, Oliver to the right. And this map shows the bicycle connectivity. There's a missing link there. There at Oliver, over to Southeast Boulevard, that this project will fill in that missing Some pictures of existing conditions. This is Southeast Boulevard looking to the east. This is pavement condition near Meade Middle School. There is a pedestrian school crosswalk there that we will move further to the east that will better accommodate students walking to and from Meade School.
That will better accommodate students walking to and from Mead School. These are existing conditions at the intersection of Mount Vernon and Hillside, which was recently improved. As you can see in the photo, there is a joint pattern adjacent to the curb that was provided for future on-street bike lanes. This is a photo near Bluff. Griffith Elementary School is to the north on Bluff, and this is the western edge of LW Clap Park. And finally, this is at the intersection of Oliver and Mount Vernon. Again, this intersection had been improved in recent years. And as you can see in the bottom right of the photo, we see an arrow there that is the on-street bike lanes that were provided with that project as well. Taking a look at the improvements. As I mentioned, there will be on-street bike lanes adjacent to the curb, one lane in each direction with a two-way left turn lane. And then again, we are moving that pedestrian crosswalk to the intersection of Estelle to better serve the school. This is another typical section between Hillside and Oliver, same type of lane configuration with on-street bike lanes, one lane each direction. We also have some water line improvements on Terrace Drive that we will include with the project as well. Financial considerations, the design fee to date is $150,000. The cost of supplemental design agreement number one for Mount Vernon from Southeast Boulevard to Oliver is $200,000. I also have supplemental agreement number two for the intersection of Mount Vernon and Hydraulic for $150,000 for a total design fee of $500,000. The, we had received Highway Safety Improvement Program funding for the intersection of Mount Vernon and Hydraulic intersection of $2.2 million. We are breaking that out because it has some additional design criteria needed to meet KDOT and FHWA standards. That's the reason for supplemental agreement number two. The existing budget of $360,000 was approved by City Council on January 17th, 2023. The adopted 2024-2033 capital improvement program includes $4.65 million in 2024. As we go through the CIP process this next year, we will add the $2.2 million of HSIP funding, so it's reflected in the new CIP. Staff is requesting initiating $350,000 for Mount Vernon from Southeast Boulevard to Oliver and for a revised budget of $710,000. The remaining funds will be used for right-of-way acquisition and project management. With that, it is recommended to approve supplemental design agreements, number one, and number two, adopt the resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures. And I will stand for any questions.
Questions, sir? Questions for staff? I see Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things here real quick. Are there, Councilmember Johnson's been talking a lot lately about protected bike lanes. Is that in the plan? And also, what would, how does that look if it's a protected bike lane that runs in front of people's driveways? Because there's a lot of residential along this route.
So when I presented that to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Board, we had some of that conversation as to what is a protected bike lane or protected or a separated bike lane. It could be by curb, or it could be by the flexible post. We have not gotten that far into the design yet. We do have some constraints with the width of this, but we will continue to work with the Bike Pet Advisory Board on that. My, with the limited space we have, we might start with tubular markers with this project. And then we would keep drive approaches open so that they can turn in and out of that, but we will continue to work with them.
I appreciate that. The second one is not necessarily a question, but I do believe we're putting the sidewalk in along Clap Park as well?
That is the intent, correct, yes.
Okay, just one ask on this, just if we can make sure that it connects at some point to a trail or something that goes along next to Clap Park. I know my wife walks there quite a bit, and you kind of have to go through a little bit of the grass there before you get to the sidewalk. So just ask that we coordinate with parks and just try and make sure that we connect along that southern border there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I was also going to ask about the bike lanes and see if we could have some extra safety protection. But I'm just super glad to see bike lanes, right? And did want to give a shout out to Alan for being here with the Bike Pet Advisory Board and Bike Week Wichita. Thank you for always being supportive and holding us accountable for multimodal transportation. And then also just a quick comment, thanks to our friends and partners at the Kansas Department of Transportation for the Highway Safety Improvement Program funds. Always glad when we can partner with them and when we have our, some of us are lucky enough to have WAMPO today. When we go, we'll make sure that we thank our KDOT friends when we're there, but thanks for your work on this project.
Any public discussion on this item? I see none. Bring that discussion back to the bench. And Councilmember Hoheisel, this is in your district. Would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we take staff's recommended action and approve the supplemental design agreements, number one, and number two, adopt the resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Clerk, will you open the roll and members cast your vote? Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Funding and design concept approval for LW Clap Park master plan.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Tim Kellums, Public Works and Utilities, Principal Planner. Here to talk to you about LW Clap Master Plan. This has been in conversation and work for a long time, as we kind of talked about with the previous item. LW Clap is kind of seeing a, coming to a, kind of evolving into what it possibly can be and some, it has a bright future. So a little bit of background, it is a former golf course and located at the intersection of South Oliver Avenue and East Harry. Mount Vernon, as we just at the previous item, is along the southern part of the park. The golf course closed in 2019 following the 2018 Golf Sustainability Review. You can see here, the park is very open as common with golf courses, but we do have a lot of great mature trees and a creek that runs through the park that really makes it a unique part of this part of the city. So a little bit of background, community engagement process began to revision exactly what needs to happen in the park, what we want. And that happened in early 2019. There's extensive efforts to have in-person events as well as some online surveys. And in 2020, obviously, we know with the pandemic, life kind of changed. We saw a lot more, a lot more people were going out to parks more than they ever have been. And a lot of people kind of taking a step back, trying to think about what the future is going to look like. So during the master plan, we had hired Confluence, a landscape architecture firm, and they've done a great job with designing the park and kind of taking us through the pandemic thoughts before and after. So commend them for their efforts. The master plan was adopted in 2021. The survey results, one of the main things pulled from that is that the natural green open space was the number one. It was very important, followed by shade structures, picnic tables, dog park area, things along those, along those items. Since the approval of master plan, we have routinely heard from the public as well as from the DAB. We went there in June of last year and spoke with other members of the public as we were going through this design process. And one thing that we kept hearing was wanting to keep the natural atmosphere of the park and limit the disturbance of the existing trees. Following the, you know, going through the discussion as we did with the tree policy, you know, one of the things that we've routinely heard is that we want to make sure that we retain our tree can be infrastructure. It's a very valuable part of our infrastructure in the city. And that was one of the things that we continued to hear is that LW Clap has a lot of that infrastructure, that tree infrastructure, and they want to maintain as much as we can. Currently, the park is experiencing high use from disc golf. If you've been out there during the summertime, you can see a lot of folks out there playing disc golf. Cross-country community, WSU Cross Country has taken a liking to the park and have actually programmed and held a tournament or meet at the, at the park. Saw a lot of use out there. And they would like to host a conference meet at the park. So a lot of things are happening, a lot of programming is happening at the park. That's something that we didn't necessarily envision, you know, before the pandemic, these are kind of new uses for the park. You know, you don't really get this big piece of land and some of the great amenities that it has, including trails, creek, large trees, that often. So I think the community has taken this park and tried to run with it as much as they can, given the great opportunity that we have with this project. Many walkers and runners also use the park. If you, again, if you go out there, you can see a lot of folks do go out there and walk and run, walk their dogs and whatnot. Based on a Core Data Service Lab study from 2022, the park's over 25,000 visitors from 2021 and 2022. That doesn't include the large event. I think there's over 700 athletes at the tournament, at the meet for WSU. So this does not include that event that happened last year with these numbers, so we imagine this is going to continue to grow. You can see here in the image, there is a structure on the, on the site. It is the former clubhouse of the golf course. You can see that in the image on the top, in the background, and in the background of the photo in the bottom. It is open to the public. It is usable to anyone that comes into the park. There are restrooms there, there's water fountains, there are drinks is being currently leased out by a disc golf supply company. They have it open. They sell discs there, they sell drinks there, they sell small snacks there. So we are seeing some, a lot of usage of the existing facility. We're also seeing some sales tax coming from that use as well. Dry Creek runs through the site, as you can see here in these images. You know, originally, when the, when the property was a golf course, it made sense to have a whole lot of bridges because you have to get across, you know, sometimes it's hard to lay out golf courses, and this is just kind of how they laid it out, and it included a lot of bridges. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of water that comes through here. Sometimes it topples over the bridges and undermines. You can see there the abutments, which is an issue. As you can see, we've blocked these off, and one of them we've already removed due to safety concerns. Most of this is just the amount of water that's running through it. The, it was originally planned for, for golf course or for golf carts. You can see there that does not have high railings. That is something that we plan to address with these improvements to make it as safe as we can. Due to public feedback and the condition of the bridges, Phase One was kind of modified from what was in the master plan to be, to align more with what we've been hearing from the public and what we're seeing on site. One of them is increasing the usability of the bridges and the creeks. Obviously, if they're not doing too hot, you know, we want to make sure that it's safe for all the users, inclusive playground. That is something that the park system, we have been wanting to do for a long time. It felt that this was a great opportunity, given that we, proximity to the clubhouse, you don't get that everywhere. The proximity to Harry, we have a great parking lot already in place that we can use for inclusive playground. It was pretty much an ideal spot to put an inclusive playground. Parking lot improvements and the dog park, we've been hearing about dog park usage a lot just internally from discussions with the public and just our conversations with folks that are out maintaining the site, different dog parks, about wanting more dog parks and how much they do appreciate having dog parks. So that's something that we've been hearing a lot of. As I mentioned earlier, Confluence, who did the master plans, has done a contract for Phase One improvements. An art consultant are a part of the team because we did receive art funding for this project, which we're very excited about. The art consultant for this project is Gretimann Group. A little bit of background, less than a month ago, City Council approved supplemental design agreement number three with Confluence for art design via artist Osman Aiken. As a subconsultant, you can see there a, an image of some of his previous work. We're very excited about his work. He's done a lot of work in public spaces, knows how to build and construct artwork that can stand the durability of public use. You can see that a lot of color, a lot of whimsical is kind of the word that we've been using, color that can be changed over time, so not necessarily a kinetic sculpture. But you know, as the sun moves, you can start to see different light bouncing off and playing with the sculpture. So that's something that we wanted to have was, you know, every time you go to the park and the playground, it's going to look different. The shades, the light's going to be different, conditions are going to be a little bit different, different time you go. So looking forward to seeing the artwork from Osman. Bridge update, so last year, we solicited bids for improvements for the bridges, which included railings. We are addressing all of the bridges in some way, shape, or form. Some of them didn't receive, some of them are in pretty good condition. They didn't need to receive a whole lot of improvements. But we thought, well, if we're out there improving bridges, we probably ought to improve as many bridges as we can and try to make them as safe as possible. Again, as I mentioned, a lot of them are in decent condition. There are just some that need a little bit more help than others. We would include railings on all of the bridges. We received one bid that was significantly over the estimate. We're working with Confluence and one of their, the civil engineer, which is Baughman, on the, on the project to figure out exactly how can we move forward with the project in the best way. You know, what makes the most sense with the funding that we have to improve the bridges. We're going to tackle the ones that are the most, the high priority, the ones that are in the worst condition, as I mentioned earlier. Not all the bridges need, you know, a whole lot of work, but if we can narrow down and just kind of hit what we need to in order to make sure that all the bridges are safe, a lot of them are, but just trying to make sure that we get them all up to, up to our standards. You can see here, just an overview of the park, the main thing that, the main items that we're talking about today are the playground, which you can see there is number three at the very top. You can see there in the aerial that there is a parking lot, a pretty large parking lot, and the clubhouse is to the northeast of that. Over on the west side of the park, in number one and number two, you can see there, that's the dog park and the parking lot associated with the dog park. Just to the north of the parking lot is Griffith Elementary School. You can see here, just a closer view of kind of just some, a general concept as we're moving forward with the, the dog park. We're breaking out into four pens, and the reason being is that we like to keep big dogs and little dogs away from each other. It just makes it a little bit easier, you know, navigating the, the social dynamics of a dog park. We like to keep one field, one pen open and one closed, so we can allow for it to be restored for one year. We've seen that, you know, dogs, you know, when we put a lot of dogs in one area, they tend to tear up the grass. So having a year off makes a lot of sense and helps make sure that we have the quality of, of service for these dog parks as high as we can. You can see here that blue line, the light blue line is where we are rerouting a lot of the trails to make more sense. You know, when it was a golf course, the trails made sense where they were. They don't really necessarily make sense where they are now, and if we are taking or removing bridges, it makes sense to go ahead and realign trails as much as we can. For those that do go on walks, people like to go in loops. If you start having dead ends, you know, it kind of, it's kind of confusing and doesn't really provide that user experience that we're going for. You can see there over in the image to the left of the screen, you can see the parking lot. So we spent quite a lot of time going through the concepts, trying to make sure that we are achieving what we want to achieve, which is inclusive playground for all ages and abilities. And that, that's kind of been the, the main structure that we've been going off of is all ages and abilities and trying to make sure that we're making a, a playground that is great for kids but also for parents and caregivers. You know, if one person of that kind of, that group there isn't feeling great, then they may not spend as much time there. So making sure that it's an enjoyable space for everyone has been important and for all different abilities. So that'll be a theme that we kind of touch on here as we go further along. Again, this is just an initial concept based, just a hand sketch, which is usually what we start off with. You can see a lot of different items here. A zip line, climbing structures, hillside slides. A zip line, climbing structures, hillside slide, shade element, music activity. So lots of different things going into this park, different than what we have in some of our other parks. Here's another, kind of a, a little bit easier to read rather than a hand sketch. So the initial concept that we were rolling with, I can see there targeting two to five-year-olds as well as some of the bigger and older kids with a large playground feature, different hillside slide. We do have playground surfacing called out in this and that's one thing that we're moving towards is having an ADA accessible surfacing on all of our playgrounds. So this will be accessible for wheelchairs, kids that have some mobility issues. That is something that we do have as a standard for our parks and playgrounds. We do hundreds of playground inspections every month and this is no different, trying to make sure that this is a safe playground. So a little bit of background, in terms of our public engagement, obviously, you know, with the master plan, we did a lot of public engagement, but we also, you know, as things kind of changed through the pandemic, you know, we wanted to make sure that we're hearing from the, the end users really. Here, we're meeting with Griffith Elementary School and Colton Elementary to get ideas and feedback on the design elements. One of the things that they kind of talked about was having different, you know, different activities, different things to climb, different towers to go into. I can remember the rocket ship at Central Riverside Park that I'm sure maybe many of you do. It has a core memory of mine and that's something that we wanted to provide with this park, something that will resonate with the kids and kind of create those lasting memories. So we plan to provide an update to the elementary schools, their staff and the kids to kind of show them where we are in the process, make sure that they feel engaged. I can, I think for ribbon counting, it'd be great to have, trying to get them, have a, a field trip to have all them out there, which would be, which would be pretty exciting. City staff also engaged with HeartSpring and Vision, their local services for impaired and disabled individuals. They provide a lot of insight, some things that, you know, you don't typically maybe think about. One thing that kind of kept in my mind was a lot of caretakers, they want to make sure that they can keep an eye on their kids. Sometimes the, the kids can just in an instant, you know, see something or want to take off. So having berms around the playground was important for us. Making sure that we have designated entrances and exits was one thing. Some of our playgrounds are just kind of more open, trying to make sure that, again, we're providing a safe place for not only kids, but also for the, for the users, for the, the caregivers and whatnot that are there. For those that do have disabilities, creating different textures within the park was one thing that I, I didn't really know about, but they did a lot of sense about having different textures, different spaces for kids to kind of calm down and decompress compared to, you know, a lot of times a playground can be just a whole bunch of activities. So trying to create activities and nodes and spaces for kids that, you know, maybe they want to just kind of play on their own or maybe, you know, there's a lot going on and they just need to decompress. That was something that we learned. Another thing was that some of, some children that are not as verbal or they're non-verbal or have different signage that they can go and point to, to express how they're feeling or their emotions, or if they want to leave, or if they need something. So trying to provide tools for caregivers and for kids to have a great time. So that was, it was very important for us to engage with those services and companies. Here's a rendering of the, the park. You can see kind of those retaining walls as you enter in. We're imagining that the art sculpture will be in that area. It will be visible from Harry Street. So again, creating a sense of identity for the park, also creating some interest, not only in the park, but also as you drive by. If you go in there for disc golf, there's also going to be some, you know, some interests visually, not only with the playground, but just for everyday users. You can see there a signage at the park, LWCLAP there in the lower part of the image. Creating a identity for the park was something that we had heard and I think has continued, you know, as we've been evolving over the years, about wanting to make sure we have an identity for, for the park. And one of those things that you can see here with, hopefully over time, we'll get those trees to grow up and still continue with that kind of natural theme that the park already has. So here's the, the more refined kind of concept where we are right now. You can see there in the circle, the art by Osman that I had mentioned earlier. Couple of things to note on this site or on this plan here. The proximity to the clubhouse, you can see that, that's kind of the, the, in the lower right-hand corner, that's the, the white box area. Very close to the clubhouse, users, if they need to use the restroom, they have a restroom available right there. Parking is very close by, which is great. We're also managing the entrances and exits by having, you can see in number 14, having the shade sails and shade area. You can see when kids want to leave or if they, a kid darts out, you can see them before, you can monitor those entrances and exits, especially towards the playground, or excuse me, to the parking lot. One of the things that we also wanted to consider was access. You know, if a kid is in a wheelchair or mobily disabled or, or handicapped, creating pathways that are ADA accessible to get them to playground and equipment is very important. You can see some of those trails to the, above number 11, you see that trail that runs along. It connects over to number one, which is our big play feature that we have planned. Couple of things to note, different musical elements, different wheelchair swings, things like that, that can be exciting for all ages and abilities. This is kind of the, the more fun slide because you actually get to see what a lot of the equipment actually looks like. I'll leave this here just for a moment for you guys to kind of process, but the big thing to note is that number one, that DNA tower in the upper left-hand corner, that is where we're trying to achieve that goal that, that we had heard from the elementary schools, is that they wanted something to climb on, something for them to get vertical. And we feel that this is a great opportunity. It creates that statement piece. It's essentially that rocket ship that so many of us probably have in our, in our minds or in our memories. We're trying new things with this playground. Cleaning the trampoline, a smaller trampoline, a lot of kids that are in wheelchair or, or mobility, have mobility challenges. They don't get, they mostly just move back and forth in a wheelchair. They don't get to move up and down. We've learned that that helps with their, their mental stimulation by moving, moving in different ways, including like a zip line, a turnabout. They don't really get to spin around. Again, they're mostly on the ground and move back and forth. That wheelchair swing is another way to create different movement, help them experience something that they don't get to experience very often. So this is that taller structure that I mentioned. One thing as I'm, as I had kind of alluded to earlier, we wanted this to be a place for all ages and abilities. So we're trying to achieve those that do have maybe mental disabilities as well as physical disabilities. So creating a place, those green structures, kids in wheelchairs can get to those for those, that rope structure is very important because it does get that, that vertical element that we were wanting. You can also have a little space up there at the top. I talked to a government in Missouri, they have one of these and he said that the kids just go up to the top and they just hang out up there. They, that's where their little spaces, that's their little decompress, decompression space. It is accessible for adults to get up there. So if a, a child does have, does need to come down or are, are uncomfortable, they do have a way to get down from there and it is available for adults to get in and out. Sometimes we, you know, with playground equipment, you kind of wonder, well, can an adult actually get there? We do feel that adults can climb up these rope structures and get there if they need to. The final colors are still to, to be determined on this, so don't necessarily lock in on the colors, but we believe that the, the overall design on this is, is very strong. One thing I mentioned earlier was color, whimsical. We feel that this plant palette that we've selected does help lead into that. Being a, a city where, you know, we're trying to include or have more native species as we can, being a bee city is also something that we, that we kept in mind, trying to make sure that we are creating spaces that do help with the environment. We feel that these plant selections do help with that as well as create color, textures and different, just different things that you normally see just in a day-to-day without being in a garden. For the dog park, we had mentioned that there was an associated parking lot to that. We are using, utilizing a, we're back in stall. We've used this already at, to the north of McAdams Park and have seen it very successful there. One of the things that we kept in mind while designing this parking lot was that we have a, we have a good feeling, a strong feeling that the parents that will be picking up kids from Griffith Elementary just to the north there will end up utilizing this parking lot. Back-end parking is a lot safer than head-end parking because you get to see where you're going. You know, a lot of times, you know, if you're in a parking lot, sometimes kids can just dart out and you can't really see them. So being able to look forward when you pull out of a stall is, is very beneficial. If there are kids or dogs running around, you know, on leashes, you know, sometimes, you know, you can't all, you can see the person, but you can't always see the little dog that's running around, you know, on a leash as they're, you know, going into the dog park. So we feel that back-end parking is great because, you know, if you can open up the back end of your, your vehicle or open the doors, it's a lot easier to get to a safe area on the parking, excuse me, on a sidewalk. It is close to the dog park. We do have some gravel areas around the entrance to help make sure that it does stay as, as dry as we can. We are retaining most of the existing topography out there to create some interest for, for the dogs and a lot of the trees out there to help create shade. So the analysis, the improvement concept has been taken to district advisory board number three, design council, as well as board park commissioners, was approved at all three of those, those bodies. The final artwork will be taken to design council at a later date for feedback and approval. Staff will continue to work with consultants to move for a path forward with the bridges. That is a concern of ours and we do plan to address those as soon as we can. We anticipate that the bidding for the playground, dog park and trail work will be later in this first quarter, if approved. One thing to note is that the Wishaw Park Foundation has agreed to donate $100,000 to the project. So we're, we're very thankful for their, their donation for this project. They are pretty jazzed about it. The existing budget of a little more than $3 million was approved by city council on January 10th, 2023 and is funded by general obligation bonds. The approved 2024, 2033 capital program includes a little more than $2.5 million in 2024 and about five, or excuse me, four and a half million dollars in 2030 for LWCLAP master plan. One thing to note is that 400, or excuse me, $4 million of that was, last week was earmarked to go to Plainview Community Center. So that leaves $500,000 remaining in 2030. We feel that it's a, we'd recommend that we move that forward, initiate that now so that we can utilize that with this, with this project, given that a lot of the funding has been reallocated to another project in District Three. So staff recommends initiating all the funding available in 2024 and again, that funding in 202030 for a rise budget of a little more than $6 million. The law department has reviewed and approved the mini bonding resolution as to form. It is recommended that city council approve the design concept and amend the bonding resolution. And I'm happy to stand for any questions.
I see multiple questions on the board for staff. We'll start with council member Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I had a few things to add to that. Final colors on the design could be maroon and gold, you know, West High. In all seriousness, no, I do love the DNA tower. I would like us to consider maybe some form of scannable item that can explain what DNA is for nerds like me who kind of know what dinonucleic acid is. That could spark some kids' interest in science at some point, playing in that and also knowing what it is. I really would love to see that zip line go across the whole park, especially if it could hold up to 225 pounds and somebody at least six foot one. On the trails, you answered a lot of what I wanted to talk about on the bridges, but since you're looking at real, realigning trails, if there are ways to, if you're reducing bridges, could we look at making those more colorful, artistic, not just a basic safe bridge? I know we, we look at that, but some forms of elements of colors or something I think would be awesome. Just making this park even more unique and especially if we don't have to keep all the bridges in there. And then on the trails, much like, I think it's Riverside Park, if there are maybe potential pause points or mile markers to talk about, maybe some interesting information about the south side of Wichita or folks who grew up on the south side, who've been influential in the city or country, just something like that around there that just brings more attention to the park and things that are going on. And then lastly, on the disc golf, I get yelled at for saying frisbee golf. For disc golf, you should have a Hoheisel course that's like really difficult.
Yeah. I, I will note that it is regarded as one of the hardest ones in the city, so.
There we go. That was all. Thank you.
Council member Glasscock.
Could we go back to the reallocation slide for a second? Or the funding? Okay. Could you go over this again in terms of what funding source was taken from this master plan for the recreation center and last week's vote and what additional funding that's going to require for us to vote today because of last week's reallocation of the recreation center funding?
I'll try to answer that as best as I can, but I may ask Troy to come up to, to answer that. So last week, a number of projects were reallocated or earmarked for Plainview Community Center. That left $500,000 remaining in 2030 for LWCLAP master plan. Having it that far out, it made sense to move that forward and given that we had removed a significant amount of money for this, for essentially a phase two, having a reduced phase two, you don't necessarily get the bang for your buck and address a lot of the things that we'd like to address in this main phase. So using that $500,000 and moving that, moving that up would allow us to make sure that this first phase is as big as we can. And essentially that would be the end of this project. Instead of leaving money out there in the future, just kind of hanging out there, kind of in limbo, we can now utilize that now and make as best a project as we can. And this would be all general obligation funds.
So $500,000 is just funding request today?
Yes, from, from 2030.
Of additional funding.
And just to clarify that, $500,000 had already been allocated for Clap Park. It's just advanced. So we're not taking money from any other project in order to accomplish this.
Thank you for answering. Appreciate it.
Council member Johnston.
Thank you for your presentation. I must point out that I grew up playing at Clap Park and I have hit almost every one of those trees at least once with a golf ball. So it's, it's a great park. So I was going to ask the same thing as Dalton, excuse me, Councilman Glasscock was going to ask. So what will not get done with, in phase two, with that $4 million being moved out?
So I think given how far out it was, we, we wanted to include as much of the improvements as we can in this first phase and see what was needed or what the, the community decided was, was necessary for the park. Given that there's a length of time there, we didn't have anything totally earmarked for it. We were kind of waiting to see what improvements needed or what the community was desiring. And I'll let Troy answer and he has probably a better vision for that.
Thanks, Tim. Good morning, Mayor Council, Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. So as you recall, we did do a, a master plan at this location that was really forward-thinking, had a huge vision, really had a lot of ambition to do something really big here. The price tag for that was upwards to 25 million, $30 million, which we knew was not sustainable. And so in regards to talking to the community and getting some more feedback through the dabs and some of our other engagement, it was really clear that we really wanted to simplify the master plan and really bring it down to these three items, a new dog park, a playground and make improvements to the trails and to the bridges. So that's the project. Essentially, the phase two has been phased out and this is just phase one that we are going to do some awesome things with. Very excited about the playground because this is really what the focus was all along, is to do something really fantastic and bringing a great playground. So hopefully that answers your question. Going back to the funding, the funding was way out in 2030 and knowing that those funds could be used for other projects, that's why last week we used those funds to go towards the Plainview Recreation Center. So hopefully that answers your question.
Follow-up question, Troy. So, so this, this money will just take care of what was presented today?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Will it affect the disc golf course at all? Are the holes all the same or?
Actually, a lot of that's going to stay very much the same. We'll actually probably enhance the disc golf course because we'll probably move a few of the, the disc golf holes and make it a little bit even more difficult. But I think it's a great compromise in regard- in regards to everything that's going on in that park, and just acting on the interests of the park and bringing in more activity. It's just really enhancing the park a lot and really bringing the neighborhood to enjoy it even more.
Do you think they'll still be able to hold cross-country meets there?
That's the plan. That's all, all, we designed everything in here to address those interests. And so there might be a slight adjustment here or there, but working with WSU, working with their cross-country coach, he's been very involved. We've been working with him quite a bit, and they're hugely excited. The high school cross-country teams are very excited about using this location as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Troy, may I ask one additional, oh, before I do that, Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to say, I forgot to acknowledge this. I appreciate former Vice Mayor Hoheisel and you and your team going to talk to the schools about that. I think it's always a good thing to engage students in classrooms, so I appreciate that.
It was a lot of fun talking to the students. They gave us a lot of different perspectives, kind of reminded me of what it was to be a kid again, and they're definitely a joy to spend time with. And Councilmember Hoheisel, I think he felt at home at that school.
Troy, I had a couple of questions. Since folks are looking at these renderings, they're looking at a playground that is much more accessible for all abilities. Can you talk to us about how many of these do we currently have in our system so people know about them? And number two, the question about dog parks, how many of those do we have so that the community can also partake in that aspect, not just at Clap Park?
So one of our efforts that we've been working on as a department is increasing service to all abilities across our services. We've been increasing our Miracle League program, which is sports for disabled youth, and we've increased that by 300%, which sounds like a lot, but really, when we weren't doing that much, it's actually been increasing. And this is the same situation with the playgrounds. We have minimal opportunities for folks with disabilities to use our playgrounds. And so this is one of our biggest goals to go after, and this is something that we're really excited about. I think this will be a catalyst for other opportunities for us to do these type of programs where we bring in new playgrounds. We'll definitely be addressing those as we replace older playgrounds with this type of equipment. So we want to make sure that everybody feels included. But this one in particular, we really want to make it grand. We really want to make this a statement. And I think also, depending on future donations and other activities, we might even add more elements to this playground as well. So hopefully that answers your question. In regards to dog parks, currently we have, let's see, one, two, three, four dog parks. Another one that's coming online out west. Dog parks are huge. I think a lot of folks really enjoy them for the social aspect of not just for the dogs, but for the people as well. Councilmember Tuttle is shaking her head because in her district, we added a dog park, and it's been a huge, huge hit. When we finish Country Acres out west, which is something that Councilmember Frye was really interested in getting done, we really worked with him closely on that dog park. It's going to hopefully come online by summer or end of the summer. This is just going to be one more dog park that will be in the central area of the city. I think will be well-used by that neighborhood. And I think that will pretty much complete what we're looking for in the future in regards to dog parks, unless we get a huge amount of interest or there's a certain other project that falls in our lap. But we really wanted to put a dog park in each corner of the city, and I think by the end of the year, we're going to be accomplishing that. And again, the dog parks are really popular. People are really interested in seeing those go into place, and after we add these additional two, we'll reevaluate.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll move to public comment. I see none. We'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel, this is your district. Would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. First off, I'd like to thank Troy and Tim, Reggie, everybody in the Parks Department. This is a labor of love with you guys. I really appreciate all the hard work you put in on this. This is really something great, and it's going to put us on the map. I'm just so ecstatic about making sure that everybody has a place that they can go to, everybody has a place to feel that they belong, every child has a chance to enjoy their childhood. So, you know, this is a tough job, but every once in a while, we'll get wins like this that really just put a smile on our face and remind us why we're doing what we're doing. I'd also like to thank Duck. He runs a clubhouse out there. He does a great job as far as working the disc golf course and keeping, upkeeping the whole park. He drives around in his golf cart. He doesn't have to, picking up trash every single day. So kudos to him and the disc golf community out there. It's a little too advanced of a course for me. My disc golf game has slipped considerably over the last couple of years, obvious reasons, but I, it's, it's on the map as far as regional attractions with this golf, and this is just going to be a great thing for the neighborhood and for the city. We do have an inclusive park at Sedgwick County Park, and I believe that's the only one currently, but like Troy said, we are putting elements in some of the parks, and there are going to be, there's going to be a lot of momentum that way. So this will provide people on the north side of town, the south side of town, and the east side of town, instead of having to load your kid up, a disabled child, and take them 20 minutes across town, there's something local and easier access. And with a lot of parents, that's a barrier that they face. So this is, this is a labor of love for everybody here, and I wholeheartedly would move that the City Council approve the design concept and adopt the amending bond resolution.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, cast your vote. Motion passes, seven zero. Before we move to the next item, could we go back to the agenda item to properly move the January 2nd meeting minutes? Madam Clerk, can you pull that up?
Yes. So it is approve the minutes of the special meeting of December 29th, 2023, and the regular meeting of December 2nd, 2024. So there's two meetings.
We have approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on January 2nd, 2024, and December 29th, 2023. I have a second? Second? We have a motion and a second. Members, please cast your votes. Motion passes, four to three. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Port of clarification. Did we skip past Council Agenda, Councilmember Agenda? Oh, that's this component as well? Correct. It was listed as Councilmember Appointments and Comments is listed as 11, and then Councilmember Agenda is listed as 10, so.
Mayor, if I'm my, Councilmember Glasscock, unless there's an item that is already on there, it's, we don't address that. If we bring up a council item, so if you were to bring up an item that you want the council to discuss, it would get placed on Council Agenda for the next meeting.
So I do in the comment section here. Okay, fantastic.
I start with Councilmember Tuttle on the board.
And we're on appointments, correct? Make sure. Yep. Okay. I would like to appoint Megan Greenway to the City of Wichita Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council.
Do I have a motion and? Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion passes, seven zero. Now we have Councilmember Glasscock.
Hey, I'll see if I'm doing the right spot. Bob, let me know if I'm not. And so I haven't been quiet, that I had some concerns with last meeting in terms of how we handled the contributions by corporations and LLCs. Specifically, I believe the ordinance that was passed last meeting is less transparent. The process, I don't think, was handled correctly. And out of principle, we currently have an ethics policy that addresses these, protects these, and that we're seven officials out of the entire state that are held to different contribution limits than the rest of the state as well. So if this is the correct point to do it, I would make a motion that we would bring this up at a different meeting, asking staff to draft an ordinance amending Section 2.56.030 regarding contributions to corporations and LLCs to match state law and previous council ordinance prior to January 2nd.
Jennifer?
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I hear a motion from Glasscock. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Can we please open the roll and cast your votes? Motion passes, four to three. Now I'll have City Manager Leighton.
Mayor, thank you. Councilmember, if I understand the motion, you would like an ordinance brought back at the next council meeting, which would be the 16th, that would reverse the action on corporations and LLC contributions. Is that correct?
Correct. If staff is able to draft that by the next meeting.
We would be able to.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I should have done this earlier, but I also wanted to thank our former Vice Mayor for his service over the last year and all that you did. I thought you served honorably, represented District Three well as Vice Mayor, and appreciate you stepping up and that extra pay that you got for being Vice Mayor as well. But thank you for all that you did.
Thank you, sir. Let's not start that rumor, please.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment. I did this on Friday, but I'll do it again, and it seems like the trend for the winter weather, we may be doing it often, but we do need the moisture. I'd like to thank our public work staff for their exceptional work and making sure that we're keeping our streets safe for everyone. Also, thank airport staff. I know they also have a huge responsibility of keeping the runways clean and the planes de-ice so that people can travel to and from our great city. So thank you to staff for just taking the extra time and extra effort to do that. Also want to remind our community members, our speed zones, our post, our speed limits are posted for ideal weather conditions. And so when we do have inclement weather, maybe everybody take just a few more minutes to get where they're going and slow down a little bit so everyone can be safe. And finally, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so just want to take a moment to thank our Wichita Police Department for all that they do, Kansas Highway Patrol. And just thank you to all of our law enforcement in our city and our state for making sure that we have the excellent public safety that we do. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I also wanted to echo what Councilwoman Tuttle had said about National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and thank you for those that have answered the call to public service. In addition, I probably should have said this earlier, but I wanted to thank former Vice Mayor Hoheisel for his service. I'm looking forward to working with you on the south side on issues, and you're one of the kindest, most genuine people that I've had the chance to meet, and thank you for the help during this transition and being someone that I can rely on as well. You also get so excited about projects. I was, when we, before he walked in here, he was so excited to talk about and see the photos of the Clap Project. So I appreciate the joy you bring. I also want to congratulate now Vice Mayor Ballard, and looking forward to working with you specifically about sustainability issues, also issues about our connecting area of Delano. And I know we're going to see a lot of positive movement in Delano. Councilwoman Ballard texted me last week when I was here carrying my big blue water bottle about making sure that we have healthy living, but also that we're making sustainable choices. So I'm looking forward to working on those with you as well. So thank you.
Councilmember, actually Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just went to tell Councilmember Hoheisel, thank you for your service as Vice Mayor. You did an excellent job, and also congratulations on Clap Park. I know how excited you are about that and how hard you work to get that project completed. And also, congratulations to Mayor Wu and Councilmember Glasscock and Councilmember Johnston, and Councilmember Tuttle over there. Congratulations and welcome to the bench.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ballard. Appreciate that. I'd just like to thank all the council members for their very warm welcoming. Very, I very much appreciate that. I will tell you, I've chaired several boards, including Newman University and the Beak Christie Hospitals, and this was a lot more nerve-wracking than either one of those. So thank you for welcoming and advice, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
I also wanted to point out that for three of us, this is our very first City Council meeting, and so I want to say thank you to the audience who's watching online and here present, bearing with us as we're trying to navigate new orders. But thank you so very much to outgoing Vice Mayor Hoheisel, who has been giving me some pointers back here, and I really appreciate that. I'm really excited to serve with you, Vice Mayor Ballard, as we move forward with 2024 and what we can do for an entire city. And I'm just really looking forward to serving with six people who love our community. So thank you for, again, helping us three onboard, and as well as staff, who've been very patient with us as well, and thanking, thank you for letting us know what we can and cannot do and should and shouldn't do, so that we are abiding by all the rules. And again, we want to be open and transparent, and welcome again, all of you, back to City Council meetings on Tuesdays at 9:00 AM, and you can tune in online as well. So thank you very much. At this moment, if I don't see any further council members on the board, I do ask that we move that the meeting be adjourned.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk will open the roll. Members will cast your vote. Motion passes, seven zero. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.